By thy legions, to the right, United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the world.
I hope everybody gets a chair, need a chair. Welcome, everybody, to the meeting of the City of Almond. Let's have a roll call, please.
President.
President.
One's President Smith.
Here.
Second.
Yeah.
And there is an accent, but you have a forum.
Okay, let's move to the consent agenda. Do you have a motion?
I make a motion.
To accept, second.
Oh, second.
Full of beer.
Aye.
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 Post. Okay, next item that I'll read to everybody. So citizens' opportunity for comment, public comment, reminder for citizens' opportunity to address the council on items not to be on the agenda. This agenda item was set aside for comments for public on topics of city business, other than those listed on the agenda. Please understand that the council will not take any action or take action on your comments at this meeting. In accordance with the Iowa Open's meetings law, the mayor and the city council will often comment from a public person to the adopted rules and just look at the of the Almond City Council. At no time is it appropriate to use profane, obscene, or slanderous language. The mayor may limit each speaker to five minutes. With that statement, is there anybody here that would like to address the council on any items that are on the agenda or on your mind? There are none?
No comments on that too?
Anybody want to say anything about anything?
I don't think so.
Okay, we're, uh, we'll close that part. Now we'll get down here to the action discussion items. Let's get Lieutenant Shane Greggo. If there's any questions for the sheriff, or you got any information for, sir?
Just the stats that I sent up to share earlier, one hundred and six calls for service total for the month of May. Forty-three of those are just the council control at the schools, the SROs travel between the different buildings. Other than that radar setups, stops, few disputes, nothing really out of the ordinary.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
All right.
We will, we will move to the Board of adjustments report.
So just every cab, we had the Heller's come and they were talking about asking for a variance to build a four thousand square foot building. Matter of fact, that is, it's our code, they're a thousand square foot. They have thirty by sixty-eighteen square foot, if I'm not mistaken, existing one that is in coordination for it just needs to be repaired and or updated. But they want to build a, build a one. I think there's some structural deficiencies to the existing, so they were asking for a much larger than what they had to do. Board adjustments met. We had some good discussion, I'll let, I'll let those guys kind of talk and if they want to, let them tell you guys what they thought the hardship was that we, that that was being overcome. I, I guess it's not my, it's not my place to input my opinion, but I think it's up to them to kind of tell what the hardship was that was being overcome for granting, for granting the four thousand square foot. It's a, it's a huge, it's a huge variance to what our codes say. We had a lot of people in town that have built one before our codes and which is the reason why we started having our own internal board adjustments, planning zones, things like that, so we could have more control over it. And that was one of the things that was happening, where people were just building these monstrosities of buildings and whole county used cap, cap around it. So that's some of the reason, I think, that we kind of got a building house.
Anyway, whatever you guys want, want to say of what the hardship was, that you thought we were going to.
As far as that, I think.
Yeah, first, yeah, go ahead.
I think really, in short, we think that the current code there for the thousand square feet is probably good for majority of the lots that we have around here in the Almond area, they're three quarters of an acre or so. It's a good size for that size lot, but when you have four and a half acres, we just feel like the, the code needs to account for larger properties. So you can have a larger building.
So if you have a thousand square feet for a majority of our, like you said, you know, most of them are three quarters to an acre large. Well, then you got four acres, so four acres, a thousand per acre, or a thousand square feet. I, I don't know, four and a half acres does not, I think, fit in, like you said, to what, how the code is currently written. What was the justification behind the thousand square feet when the codes were written?
How many square feet are on properties, lots, lots of here twenty thousand square feet, thirty thousand square feet.
Okay.
That's why they limited it to a thousand square feet.
So that was the justification of the thousand?
Four acres.
Right.
Why can't we have a four thousand square feet?
Correct.
Exactly.
That's the way.
And it's really as simple as that.
And the other thing is. The other, the other thing is.
Is can we make a motion for the zoning committee to reevaluate that for larger lots? They have to be able to adapt.
I, I think you would have to rewrite their code. The law.
Can the zoning board do that?
And amend that?
Why can't it be?
Why?
You don't amend, don't you?
The council would, it would still have to go through the council.
Yeah.
It would have to be.
Can we just put it on the work session for next Monday?
Council.
Yeah, so let's put it on the work session for next Monday, so that we can talk about. I think.
We'll, we'll do that.
Well, but that's amending the zoning.
But that's why we allow, but that's why we went over there.
Going forward.
Yep, right.
That's going forward. That's why we allowed the variance, because we felt like for this situation.
Correct.
There's barriers.
So you let, you let, you allow the variance because you disagree with the code, not as certain as there's a hardship?
That's where, that's where I'm struggling.
Well, the hardship is.
I agree with everything you guys said about, they're wonderful people, they've done great work on their property, but this, this is what our code is.
They may have more hardship things to explain, I don't, I don't know, but that is the hardship. I mean, they have a building there now.
It's becoming dysfunctional.
Right. I think it got some damage to the entry.
I know, we have this group.
To tear it down and build a building, that's, that's the hardship. They're, they're not being allowed to really.
So why, why can't?
Use their property as they should get.
Based off of the amount of property.
It's not the amount of the argument they address.
Why not, why not rebuild what they have?
Because, well, they, that's not, that's not what they want to do.
That conversation also never came up at that meeting either.
Bigger is better, Scott.
Well, it should be fair, it is four acres, it takes a lot to maintain those four acres. The size of equipment, things isn't the same size of materials, equipment than it was on the original general bill. Even if it could be grandfathered into the same size, it's obviously better than having it smaller than it's even there.
And I don't think anybody wants you to go smaller, we're just, we're just discussing what you asked. When we, when we discussed it, I don't remember going for all three of these items that qualify as a variance. I think Jamie might have mentioned a lot of them, but it's pretty fair that we have to show hardship or show reasons for altering.
Read, read them off, so.
Landed question cannot yield a reasonable.
Well, well, everybody here, so we're transparent.
Landed question cannot yield a reasonable return if used only for the purpose allowed within that. To the part that the owner is due to meet circumstances, but did not do the general conditions of the neighborhood, which may reflect the unreasonableness of the zoning ordinance itself.
That aside, right there.
That's exactly what I pointed out.
How we voted on.
That's, that's great. Under, uh, all, under the decisions that have been for zoning variance establishes on this, there are hardship by showing all of the following.
Which ones?
In the use of. I, I.
Which one?
Where was that?
My understanding is to move your point of one of the three items.
You have to have all three.
All three.
So what, what don't we have?
Use be authorized by the variance will not alter the character, it's not gonna alter the character. And it's not, and it's, and it's not being used for a purpose allowed within, outside of the zone.
I don't get it.
I think we qualify all these.
Yeah. I think so too. Thanks. Yeah, we, you got it.
Although that, there's also, there's also some, some guidelines over.
Yeah, so except that.
It's great, though.
So they can ask for a second review, perhaps a second meeting?
Right.
The mayor would like to dictate that we can?
I think that we should do that, revisit it, and, you know, hang all this stuff out, and then we'll have something agreed to go on.
That okay, Scott? I, I, I can't, for us as a council can't just say that. That would be fine with me, and I, and I think it's, I think it's worthy of more conversation.
So is it time enough here that we can just continue this conversation?
Yeah. Continue the conversation with this information and come back, give us another recommendation. And, you know, it can be the same recommendation or whatever, so just, we would like to have you revisit it. The big thing is, is I think what we were, the council was trying to do when they did the ordinances and everything, and adopt all these ordinances that we'd never had before, was it was kind of willy-nilly, anybody could build anything, anywhere, anytime. And, and so we put together the code book, you know, and we spent a lot of time and effort on that. And trying to stick as close to possible with that information, you know, and.
I think we all realize that we respect.
We ran into a big problem over around sixty-nine with that metal building that was built there. I mean, we dealt with that for a long time, didn't we, very threatening legal action and all this different kinds of stuff. And we just don't want this to happen again. We, you know, we'll probably get the same information and recommendations from you.
That was, that was the discussion about that we had. We talked about a couple of different buildings as to why they can have one and we can't. Again, that was before, I brought up the building to the north that was denied because of the size and they found a way.
Louder.
Through our codes, through our codes to, we've since eliminated that code, so that, that can't happen again. I.
And you don't want people to know, so we're just playing, I guess we're just trying to, we're trying to do our.
I understand that, I think we all respect that.
It's not, it's not what we do or don't want. It's, it's what, what is in the codes.
And you gotta have that, you gotta have that, but in this, in this case, we're not gonna come back with a different answer, I can just tell you.
Exactly.
And, and we, and that's, it's why I asked the question of what was the actual justification of the thousand square feet? Which is very sound, that's very sound.
Very good one.
It was very good one. And it was based on, you know, you know, the two thousand square feet of, you know, property or whatever. And so that makes sense, but they have, you know.
That's why they can look at the codes, look down through the codes, find out the actual square footage of an extra building on a certain size of lot.
Right.
More likely got, got quite money.
So why are we trying? Hold on, we can't just decide as we're meeting, or as this group, I don't, I don't think they have the power to just ignore what's in the code.
The code. The code doesn't have room to size a lot. It's, it, that's not true.
You just, you just got to the same, that's the justification of the thousand square feet was based on the size of.
But it doesn't say that.
Well, then let's change the code so it does. Just like you made, you changed the code to not have attached, to retain what we had.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to do this, because it's not up to the Board of Adjustments to get the zoning to change their.
So back to my question, I just have one question, can I have one question? I have one question. So why are we, we have a four thousand square foot building that these people want to build on four acres? But we let fourteen thousand square feet on two acres? Like that doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense.
Thank you. It's, it's right by the code.
Thank you.
There, you guys gave a variance for their pool in their pool house, but you guys are harassing these people for a pool.
No, we're going out on the back, uh, block.
Yeah, you gave a variance, right?
With a pipe.
Hey, everybody, tonight, interject something, okay?
No.
Here's what we want to do, or I'd like to do. Board of variance has already said that they will come back with the same information. So at this, this time, I would entertain a motion.
Doesn't matter what we want, it's only for Sherry, Sherry can, Sherry can ask that they, that they, we can get, or who can ask.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna listen to the lawyer's advice is what I'm going on. And he advised me that the, the city council can take the information that they, we already have from the Board of Review and.
It is, so it says the council man, so they're scratching their manual decision back that are, it's a bit strange, because it says the mayor, city attorney, but I think the council could take a vote on whether or not they, the developments have been that, just let us go forward. No lie, because it's saying that you guys review it. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not along, I don't know.
Right. So with, with that, I think we can, we can ask for a vote of the council to approve the, the permit, they've already filled out all the information, everything is done. So, unless, uh, maybe you.
I have a question before the vote takes place.
Yes.
Go ahead.
No, no.
So if the vote comes negative towards them, what happens then?
I think it would be remanded, it would be asked for it, be remanded.
Okay, so I'm, I'm not necessarily on board of taking a vote.
Right, I mean, why have, why have the Board of Justice?
I mean. To be able to follow our codes and to decide.
So if.
So that's there's a hardship. I mean, I'm just, it's, I'm more of a, I'm more of a blocking guy. And if hardship is you can't build it per our code, and I don't think there's any of that. And that's, and, and I tend to, to overterm the code based off of, we just think that it's wrong, I don't think that, I don't think that's a hardship.
Okay, so let's just review, can we review these three things? I mean, and, and I, I want input from the council on this too, so the landed question cannot yield a reasonable return if used only for a purpose allowed within that zone. So meaning like you can't turn into a business, right? Is that, is that what that means?
What, what does that mean?
What is the, I.
So when I. From what I heard them say, if they've got equipment for taking care of four and a half acres, it's larger than you would have.
Yeah, we got tractors and pillars and loaders and like other mowers.
So that, I think that means that is you can't have what you need for four and a half acres.
So we meet number one.
So we meet number one.
The plight of.
That's an opinion.
Right, that is a.
From the attorney.
That's what they hired you for.
From the attorney.
The plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances and not to general conditions in the neighborhood. Okay? Which may reflect the unreasonableness of the zoning ordinance itself, while the four acres.
The size of the lot.
The size of the lot fulfills that.
Then let's go back to the attorney and get this key back on number two.
So I think we are gonna have this come up as we take some of these farms into the city, but like, we are gonna have to probably do various.
Yeah, like Jim Fauch.
He's a agricultural.
Well, but if you bring him into the city.
He is in the city.
Well.
Let's, let's. I'm gonna get this. They're in the city as president.
So Jim, would you, would you?
I'll get the U one item number three answered.
Jim, would you say item number two is a hardship?
Yeah, I will promise they're good.
Okay, so we can move on to three.
The use to be authorized by the variance will not alter the essential character of the locality. So they already have a building there that's.
How, how about thirty by sixty?
Thirty by sixty. Okay, a thousand square feet in, what's that?
Eighteen hundred.
Eighteen square.
So, and the way that I see that you're situating the new one, it's more straight on.
We're currently the back corner, it's Kitty Wompis, and we're put off the property line.
Yeah, and now you're moving it to ten off.
Ten foot off.
You're actually making it four.
Bringing it in.
Yeah, so.
It's an improvement.
It's an improvement.
I think.
Well, when you tear it down, then you have to go buy codes.
Anywhere, but it's still.
If you tear it down, you gotta go buy codes, right?
Yeah.
So number three. Now, Jim, I want to say yes.
Oh, I had just answered, because it says you have to send out numbers to all the neighbors, and three hundred feet, she's a variant.
We talked to neighbors also, we talked to, um, my brain freeze, we talked to the one right across the street. Yes, thank you, and then we talked to Sebix. Tell them to their.
Which was by three hundred feet.
Without three hundred feet. So they have talked to the, yeah, and no one's objected.
Um, they're, um, the Sebix are actually extremely excited and upset it has taken us five years because they can't stand the ugly green shed that they were.
So he's a yes.
If they put around here and down.
Dale was like, they won't let you do it.
Okay, um, based upon the lawyer's recommendation, um.
Was number three recommended by the attorney?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, let's work out, let's see if the neighbors. Character of the neighborhood, doesn't sound like it.
No, we shut that red, or just put up any newer shed. It's a nicer shed.
But I'm not trying, I just.
I'm trying to follow the rules. I'm not gonna hold it against you, don't worry.
I'm gonna follow.
I'm gonna buy your beer.
That's on paper.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, at this time, you know, save everybody some time. I'd like to take Jim's recommendation and pull a vote of the council on this, this application. Go ahead.
Mr. Rutherford?
No.
This, this one's, yes, please.
No.
Yes. Oh, now, so now we have a, we have a tie vote, does that mean I have to cast the.
But if these here are the number code, I will have to take all of them.
If these three were proven, these three hardships were proven to be the case, why aren't we doing it all?
Jim, we had a council member that wasn't available to vote by phone, needing, in the event.
Call Scott Andreas and get his vote. If, if we can't get a hold of him, then I'll see if I'll be, can I see the tiebreaker?
Did you tell me to text someone? Hello, sir. Hey, so there is, well, I'll let the council explain, that's not my place.
Scott, this is Bob. We have had considerable discussion with Board of Review and our, our city council and under Jim's direction, we've called for a, a vote as to whether to issue a permit tonight for the Heller's property there across the street. And the vote has come out to a two to two vote. And we need your direction as to what your vote would be on it.
Tell him what the variance is, if he has an idea.
The variance is, the variance is, I don't know if you got a chance to look at it or.
He's on vacation, so.
Whatever, but.
I did, and I, I got to do it again, and I believe I understand what it is they're trying to do. And my only question was, was their old building coming down? If that's the case, then my vote would be yes, get it in the permit.
Yes, the building's coming down, sir.
All right, Scott, they're taking the building down and replacing it with a, a larger building, but they have four acres there, so. And you know the situation, you live close to drinking on you, so. All right, thank you. With that, three to two vote, we will, I'll have direct, Sherry here to issue the building.
Okay.
Okay? Very good. Any, any other items, uh, you wanna go? We're gonna go, the what?
We don't quite understand why we even have the Board of Adjustments if this is the situation.
No, please, it's not, don't go, please don't take that, we, we cherish this job that you guys do, we do. And we really want your involvement. This was this kind of a, you know, on this thing, there's technicalities. There's, there's technicalities that we want, we're trying to, trying to be a big city, you know, and trying to do it right. But we're not a big city, but you know what, when you pay money for these books and, and.
It doesn't mean it's right.
And, no, it doesn't, but you know, down the road, you know, the Heller's might sell their property and, and then other people move into it, and then they sell it, and then they sell it. We wanna make sure that what they did and what we issued and what they did will carry through the generations.
So our time meeting with the Heller's and reviewing this, literally, I mean, it wasn't.
It was, it was not, it was not, because then I can see, as a council person, as an assistant of Almond, that what was needed and what was not, I know, I know a lot of law and the things in between it, but I understand where you're coming from, and I understand where they're coming from.
Absolutely.
They have four acres, I would love to have four acres, but not four acres, right, like, that, and they're trying to improve it, and that's amazing.
Yes, and to put them through this that we have is ridiculous.
Well, it, it would, you know, I ain't know any idea this was even happening at all. But we've done, we've talked about it, but, you know, we just wanna all get along here and, and it's not, we don't want anybody to feel like they've been left out or that their time is wasted or anything like that, you know, we just, please don't. It's so hard for us to get people interested, seven boards, planning and zoning is, is a really tough one. And we've got to approve a comp plan, and we're having a hard time getting them to come to a meeting so that we can get a form.
So my question is, we did vote against the various, the rules and regulations a few meetings ago for a remodel in town? But we weren't called back here for that.
Well, there's precedents that you said, so now you said precedents.
But we, we did last night.
Can I talk?
No, but you didn't listen to what I said, is that we actually voted against the rules and regulations at one point, but we were. No, but you didn't listen to what I said, is that we actually voted against the rules and regulations at one point, but we were called back for a while.
That, that's a different situation. You set precedent, we were setting everything at a, a thousand square foot because that would, uh, set precedence as we go and grow. Now with you, a four acre lot, it's a four thousand, uh, square foot. Somebody comes in and buys a hundred acre, now you're saying they can build a ten thousand square foot?
That's why finding zones is changing.
Exactly.
Exactly.
That's why they need control, we're not, I don't really wanna be arguing. Yeah, I'm just saying, that's where I'm coming from, is the precedence that we set as we go.
Yeah, I don't, that's still, they have to go through the finding, they have to go through.
And that's why this is, this is.
I think we were setting a precedence for everything.
You draw it, it comes back, and now it's done, they get what they want, but you gotta remember the precedence.
It's not a huge variance, around four and a half acres. That's why.
It is by the code.
Yeah, that's why the codes need to be adjusted based on lot size.
I got one more thing to say.
Well, and that, that's, that can be done.
Well, they're, that's.
And how does that, is that through the city council or?
I got one more thing to say. Uh, the, the.
That would compare your city administration.
To, it says right in our code, it is subject to, uh, discussion by, let's see, it's subject to.
It's all procedure.
I, I didn't feel, if we would have had as much of this conversation about these new things or on this topic the other day, then it probably wouldn't happen. Every, everybody was just pointed to, oh, the codes are wrong, the codes are wrong, the codes are wrong, is, is how, is how, so, uh, being new to the board of adjustments as the liaison, I just wanted to make sure that it went in front of the council, and the council spoke. They said, they said yes, so enjoy the new building. I don't wanna be a part of it either, but it was such a large variance, four times more than what our codes are meant for, so.
And the lot's four and a half, the others.
And, and we, and again.
It's eight times bigger than my lot.
Again, again, it was a big enough variance based off the code and, and as you, and I'm a Google follower, everybody will tell you that for the most part. So that's, that's why I asked.
Can I just say, as the ed- as educator, that also shouldn't have been the goal of the meeting last time? Maybe that she should have been prominent and out and guiding us through the conversation, so that we can be efficient, so we could.
It was, it was that.
Yeah, it was.
It was that.
I know we had it, but it wasn't guiding the conversation, and if that's what brought us back to an additional meeting to go over it again, in my world, we can't do that.
That could be.
And that's not.
I agree.
We had our, I think we, just by looking at it, we investigate on our own. We almost sometimes have our minds made up before we go.
Well, I just felt like a repossessment.
And it was, yeah.
All right, I agree with what you're saying, I was, yeah, that's, I'd agree if, if that committee would happen and did, hey, let's review this.
This would just help all of you, it seems like that.
Okay, uh, Mr.
Lauren wants to, wants to.
First off, we need the board of adjustments.
No question.
Okay, it's not just addressing one garage or building, it's the dressing, the size, the additions, the houses and everything else. We need that, the building goes. So do not be away with this, building adjustments, whatever, 'cause we need that, we might have to tweak and make considerations that approach. It's all it is.
Which is my question, we still haven't gotten a firm answer on, 'cause I think we all agree that this particular code and maybe s- some others need to be adjusted or changed or looked at differently because of the, the diversity of our community, how do we change it? Or how do we at least look into change?
So we have another work session for next week.
Okay.
And we'll make adjustments to amend the ordinance, which is written law, which Jim will have to write, you know, work planning and zoning.
Sure.
And they have to adopt it, and then it'll come back to the council.
Okay, well, thank you.
Good information. So if you think, if you have a suggestion of a lot size or you've seen a law somewhere, can you bring it to Sheri and then we can talk about it at the work session?
You bet.
Right, yeah, that's, that's good information, yeah.
Yeah, and one other thing, Mr. Schrum is here, so I feel like I can say this out loud, he came to the next council meeting after you guys did not just prove it and asked the council to look at it again, and the council sitting here said they felt like they agreed with what you guys had decided and chose to not push it back to you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you guys for all that you do. I appreciate it.
Ditto.
Yeah, ditto.
I appreciate it.
Takes a bit.
I like that, I like that. We got a deal.
Thanks, Kevin, thanks, uh.
Thank you.
Yes, uh, do you know me, it's my, my district, BBS, or about a sentence or something. Oh, I might, let's, if I, okay, actually, if I could come at one, I'd do part of the week, okay?
Thank you guys.
Hey, let's move on here.
I agree that, I was looking at it.
Oh, no, that's fine. No, I'm glad you looked at it, but I, what I was worried about was if they start, or something happens.
Okay, next on the, uh, Jim, maybe you'll see your.
Yeah, we, we had a meeting, uh, Dean Kay was here. We, we didn't have enough to make it for him, but we, we talked with him, uh, thanked him for what he's doing, uh, we need, uh, signed letters of commitment and to proceed, we, we really need that for everything that he wants to do. And, and then I think that would get everybody on board, but other than that, we're, we're spinning our wheels. We gotta have letters of commitment from landowners to, well, Pope County, if they're in, or Elkhart, whoever's gonna get in so that we can proceed with this and, and get everybody on board. I, I'm all for it, we can get letters of commitment.
I need your press.
Yeah, well.
Start the community meetings to adopt that comp plan.
Yep, yep, that's.
We just gotta get the comp plan done.
Yeah.
I told them, and told them, and told them that we talked about it and get it done, and then we didn't have a call.
Uh, I ran through the whole thing, I'm, it, it, it has a lot of repetitive information, it has the growth and everything of Pope County, expected growth and everything, and population and business and I thirty-five corridor, which is all good information. And, you know, I hope it all comes to pass, but, uh, if, if we're gonna keep putting money into it, we really need letters of commitment, so then.
Now, the press should be able to, uh, grow the technology development, know the.
And before we talked about it, with some of the people in charge down there, they, they, they're not in on the deal. As soon as the right people get in there and they look at the tens of thousands of acres up here in the northern, uh, part of Pope County and they see the revenue that can be generated from it, the, the light's gonna come on and they're gonna say, okay, let's do this. But as we sit now, it, everybody's not on board, so.
Who are you referring to? Get on board.
Uh, Pope County, it needs to be on board, uh, schools.
Are we talking about the drainage thing?
No, the, uh, sewer.
Sewer system, future sewer system for all.
Money.
Janicary sewer.
Yeah.
You guys do have engineers.
We are working.
We have engineers working on, and, and all that. And he's doing a great job, but we gotta get the people on board, 'cause it's a twenty million dollar.
It's the property owners' commitment to get on board with this.
Yeah, and cities and industry or whoever to fund it.
The big driver, the big driver in this is the school system. They're, they're filling seats, as he says, butts and ees, that's kids. They have to flush the stool. They're on second tank, the micros is, uh.
Oh, at the school?
At the school.
I thought they were on the.
Yeah, well, it's kind of a, no, mainly second tank and laboral, uh, system, you know, i- i- it's, it's a larger system, but it's not gonna take care of fifty-two hundred new homes in our district, so. Anyway, um, let's, uh, uh, we've got the planning and zoning, you got that all done for us, thank you very much, Greg. Um, this, the next one is a motion to consider resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero thirty-seven. It's a resolution authorizing installation of drainage behind the home below one hundred thirty-fourth avenue from six to, to eleven forty north east, uh, one hundred thirty-fourth avenue. Uh, we've talked about this, uh, a couple of different council meetings, everybody's got all of the information on this. Um, the only thing I will say is the number came in on, uh, on, on my house, uh, I was the unlucky one that had the, the plug, which everybody else, it's a crap, I mean, it, it's, we don't know, anybody, it didn't happen to anybody on one hundred thirty-four all the way to sixty-nine, but, uh, it, it cost me, uh, just under seven thousand dollars for that, uh, to have that repaired. They had to, we trucked them in and tried to suck out that, uh, that plug. And when I look up the street, I see a lot of houses that have trees, you know, in their backyards that is normal. And they don't know where the, their, uh, pipes, uh, drainage pipes are, or they've been plugged. So I'm just saying that everybody knows what the problem is, and this, we've identified the problem, we've identified the solution. And, uh, it's, it's up to the council if they want to, uh, to help, uh, find a solution. Um, so with that resolution, I'll ask for a, uh, protocol vote. Or accept the resolution, motion to accept the resolution, make a vote. Can I just say?
Are we gonna talk about it?
Yeah, we need to discuss it.
Yeah, yeah. I have a question.
Hold on.
Do you have a second?
What's, what's the question?
Are you guys sure this is gonna work? Laura said this is not gonna solve your problem last time we were here.
Hold it, hold it right there. Hold, uh, we're gonna save this a long time. I have not, got a second. Without a second, I can't have a discussion. The resolution dies.
Okay.
Okay. We're used to discussing. Okay, uh, next item is a motion to consider resolution twenty twenty-five eight zero three eight. Resolution authorizing the purchase of a laptop and a computer for the city clerk. Uh, city clerk, or tell us about that.
Oh, my current computer's barely moving on, however, help, Lauren. Okay, we're sorry, thank you, Marty. We got the hot sales. It's been under two thousand, that's a ton of the resolution.
Yep.
So I just wanted to.
Is that, is that long?
It's the almost five thousand dollar business laptop made for this type of work, so.
It's just got a little more horsepower than the one you got.
A lot.
And it, it, and it needs that. It needs that. Yeah, she, uh, she absolutely has to have that, um, okay, that capacity.
You got that, yes. Uh, next item, I want you to make a motion. We have a motion, uh, to purchase the.
A merger.
A second, second, all paper.
Aye.
Close. Okay, next item, I want you to validate the motion to consider resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero thirty-nine. The resolution, uh, naming the depositories.
This is a documented document to this financial policy that I gave for next week. Basically, what it was, two million dollars was the number that it gave me. And once we reached that much money in our savings account, or, uh, it would have to start confessing, and that's why you put us up high. It's a companion document for this.
A motion to, uh, make a motion, I want you to have a second.
Oh, second.
Uh, discussion.
I think we need to get all accounts up here, review the interest rates on all set accounts so that, uh, these two banks that we are dealing with, we can, uh, apply our monies into the ones that are gonna give us the best, uh, interest rates on existing loans. Yeah?
Do you want me to come up here?
Just accounts, but when you get your account, they'll tell you exactly what your interest is on them, and then if it's not at five percent or whatever it is, uh, a lot of places will give between five and ten, and, and if they're lower now, we need to, uh, negotiate with them for a better account, or a better rate on our monies.
Cities are kind of an anomaly though, we have to go get every asset insured, because they should work to propose a market release.
Our all banks have the I C C, credit unions are that.
Okay, uh, just the, you all pushing for a second, discussion, uh, all paper?
All right.
Aye.
Yes.
Yeah, if you're gonna go through for us. Great.
Okay, uh, so if you're, I thought you said credit card, or, uh, said credit unions.
Because that is where we have to get a card, too. Oh, that was a print my hand from wanting. And maybe you'll find out, eventually, they bounce it out, and they'll say.
We'll find out what rate we're getting.
Yeah.
So.
Something, something like that. Well, put very little in there.
Yeah, to our writers, just for the debit card.
Yeah, two thousand dollars in there, yeah, but yeah, it just wasn't there. I think council needs to, per day information.
And then the last one is just the financial policy that was approved, that I brought from another city, and I did this year, and I shared it all up, you guys have email. A second.
All paper?
Aye.
Close. Okay, Curry, you got something that you wanna bring up?
Just the speed bumps, and she put it on the work session for us. Everybody down my street really wants them put back in after everything's there. Yeah, we did, yep, the side posts are still there. You still have the speed bump signs?
Yeah, I have the bump signs, I just changed them to slow children and play at my discretion, because there was a.
Everybody liked that.
Kids on those roads.
Yeah, but they'd like to see them in, they think it'll, uh, turn the big trucks and not have them come down anymore, and there is children there and it'll slow down the late people for practice and pick up and drop off and.
Well, we're, we're, I'm hearing a whole lot of, you know, on the energy, what happened, causes.
I, I think the ones needed removed up there because they were too close to the stop signs, but everybody would like them back here, so.
So that's something that in a road would have to, this one.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, anything else you wanna put on for the study? Is that better, continue discussion of other options? Timehouse, or is that just something else?
Well, you bring it up, 'cause it's open talk.
Here's the, so, other options, I would assume that that would include my department there, you want me to.
Other options, I would say.
Estimates.
Getting our city engineer involved.
That's what I was gonna say, is to get other options, you need to have, you, I, we need to have a, a, a way to get apples to apples. So we need to have, you know, the engineer look at that and give us.
And what, and what, and what absolutely are we trying to rethink? Ground water, is it, runoff, is it water?
I wasn't here for last week's meeting last week, so I apologize for that, but.
The way Forrest talked, it, uh, it would, would, the surface water is not gonna change, it's still gonna come down, like, if you get six inches, you got six inches coming down. The tile, if, if you cut every one of them and rerouted them, it would help things south of one hundred thirty-four.
Would it stop those, would it stop everybody's something from running?
No.
But it's not gonna solve the problem of water shortage, because that's what that water is gonna produce from all these tunnels. I'll put a lot.
Uh, I, I'm with you, let's get the in- engineer in there and see if he can, he might have done other projects where he could have permanent information in a similar situation.
I think the plant, I think it could work.
Close, not being.
Yeah, but when you sit there and you look at the elevation changes from the top down to.
Through up here, the top, up, upright.
Well, where I live.
Yeah, yeah, oh, coming down, to the grid.
And, and then you go clear down, you know, where Bill and, and Larry.
Yeah.
That seems to be the bottom, and, uh, you know, there, there's a lot of elevation change, and with.
And with today's technology and moving position and digging, I'm a cattle guy.
Those guys.
You know, the equipment is good, you know, but, uh, it's only as good as the plant. And, you know, and, and I also, I thought, okay, well, they're gonna do a big trench. You know, and they'll know that, you know, and, and they can actually load the water table. Uh, but if you put in, you know, just regular black tile pipe and, and just plow it into the ground, sometimes that, you know, sometimes that takes years for it to, to even start running.
Well, and the topography of the soil content itself, between all the different mites, you could have sand, you could have clay, you could have.
But it'll rain, if, you know, you, you, you were.
This tile back behind the house is not gonna drain the basement. I drove up there the other day, it was raining pretty hard, lies basement, through houses, got water coming up the side of the houses and run right down, outside the walls, down into the basement, it's not running away from houses. That's our people's problem.
It, it is.
Okay, when you put that tile in for the future, until two, you do some other thing. They're gonna clear it in at twelve inch or whatever size diameter pipe, a hole in the bottom, rock on top, it's gonna drain all that underground water.
It will.
Yes, and it'll be a big help for our future developments to the north on, on one hundred thirty fourth. That would be a big plus. And then we're gonna get that water tables down and keep doing the maintenance and the grading on top. That helps create water, cause right now, there's all these dams set up there and little valleys down there. The water's not running away like it should, we're not doing the maintenance. So I think that tile will be a good project and I think for the future, evolve it, get it done now for us, develop special events. And then, then all that water is controlled and the ground level water below will be controlled.
But this is not listed as, um, that type of town, this is.
I don't, anything I talk about tile, walls, butter, rock, that's what we talk about. I don't know what he's talking about.
Sir, I, I was here last night, I took notes and I made, made you guys say it. I said, so the object is to drain the swamp and lower the water. And the, the response I got was yes. And then we, you know, we start talking about the different elevations that it would take to actually, you know, lower the ground wa- water. Uh, but I, I do agree, you know, um, picking my words here, that, you know, uh, dealing with a whole bunch of Southwest Iowa land and things like that is not the same as doing this project. Uh, you know, we're, we're, you know, uh, uh, I don't, I, I watch it, I think it could be successful, but I, I do think that, uh, you know, you, you need some smart people. Maybe, because you're right, and I remember on the last meeting, you guys brought some really good points about, hey, when we, when, when, when that guy's digging, he's gonna find some top. And, and, and it doesn't matter what elevation you put that at, you could always take that down to it.
Right.
You can't take it up to it, you gotta, you gotta go down to it.
Our project has to go down to the existing top.
No, the existing tile is gonna have to go down, so one of you guys.
But the existing.
Yeah.
Current existing is already almost seven foot deep in that specific.
Well, I think, I think you're looking at all of that, if that was not, if not deeper.
So that's, we don't know all of that.
That's true, exactly, yeah.
Because it could have silted in, when the guy put it in, he put it all in at six foot and now it's silted in, but now. Well, the top.
It could.
And, or vice versa.
Well, exactly, and, and, but, but you can always direct that down to the top. And another thing is, you know, is, okay, uh, the tile, the tile itself. Uh, you know, that black field tile is, is great when you're tiling a field.
A field's cheap.
And, you know, you, you, you.
And, and no trees are gonna grow there ever, it's a field.
But when you're talking about this field, which you guys don't want any maintenance for a crushed tile, they, they actually make PVC tile with whole dial lock. I, I don't know what those, I don't know what C L three hundred means.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, uh, uh, getting the right tile and bedding incorrectly at the right depth and, and, and who, they might be able to help, you know, a twelve inch tile will move a ton.
This is what this is recommended, it's twelve inch tile. When I talked to the guy.
Who, who is the guy?
That, Lynn, or Landy. Yeah.
What's his name?
Landy. That fixed his, that tile, did that work behind his house?
Okay.
That guy.
Okay.
That's his, so it's twelve inch tile, we're talking about putting clean outs on both ends and wherever we need it. And then have a T joint when it goes more between Bill's house and that, uh, water run. And we definitely want a bore underneath there, several reasons, cause we don't know how deep it's gonna be yet. And when they start this project, what it takes to the elevations adjusting one way or another, get this work running.
Yeah.
So one tenth of, one, one tenth of one percent of flow is fairly flat, right? So, yeah, so they gotta do some adjustments as they go, they, nobody knows exactly what the elevation.
Yeah, and that's, you know, and I, I don't know your guy.
That's how it's kind of.
And he, he could be the smartest guy in the room.
Well, he's worked on, for years, he was, he's worked on that for two or three years.
Yeah, well, hey, I got customer, worked on the same farm for fifty years.
He's very, very familiar with.
Yeah, but, uh, uh, I guess my point is, is I, I think this plan could do it, but hey, I'm all for it. You know, uh, I, I just don't want to go through the expense.
We're all together.
And, and not have a word.
That's, that's the woman.
Here, here's the other quarter that, I don't like the expense any personal. But I think for the future development that we're talking about getting sanitary sewer and everything, now would be time to start setting our elevations for the future for the launch by creating this house and all the services.
Exactly why you wanted to do it here.
Yeah, that's exactly it, that's why we had B and K, when you talked about it. So that's all covered for the here.
Okay.
That all needs to come together.
And, and, uh, you know, and, and I don't know, you know, they might actually have information.
They got it.
On, okay, if you want to drop a water table two feet and it runs this much linear feet, you need this big a tile.
We should have a special committee, you have Scott.
No, I can do either.
Look at that, look how.
You have a motion to, uh, your.
Motion.
Paul Faber?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you guys.
That's what's wrong with this plan.